...call me if you're, I'd like to vet your offer schedule this evening. You please stand and, hey, I'm glad, I'm pleased you're back getting for, uh, come on, stop. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, free, equal, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you.
Mrs. Pocor?
Here.
Mr. Laser?
Here.
Mr. LaCascio?
Here.
Mrs. Bates?
Here.
Mr. Music?
Here.
Mr. O'Lardo?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Dr. George?
Here.
Mr. Hauser?
Here.
So, sir, as before, I have a bill of course. Legislative report, Mrs. Sawyer.
I'd just like to note that I'm sure many of you have read about the legislation that has been proposed by Representative Kristen Phillips Hill out of York County about the idea of snow makeup days and weather-related days being a thing of the past in that districts would be able to assign work, et cetera, through various processes that would allow students to do work while they're at home. There has been some schools that were anticipating in a, a group to start this process and see how it would work. But this is the first time legislation has come up regarding this being something that school districts could voluntarily anticipate in. There's clearly a lot of questions with this legislation. Obviously, delivery of information as well as accountability at that time, as well as the supervision of students when they're at home depending on the age of the student. So, we'll keep an eye on this. It is an interesting concept, especially as schools wrestle with more and more types of closings. As we know, most recently, we had numerous neighboring districts who were unable to start school because of various physical issues, structural issues. So, just a note that it was just presented, but I know it has received a lot of interest. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Education planning, Miss May.
Thank you. We welcome our students back out of the building for their reforming.
Hi, I'm Chloe and I'll be representing the elementary schools this year. So, um, this month kindergarten's back to school night is this coming Monday, September seventeenth, from six to seven P.M. Um, sixth grade camp parent reading is Tuesday, the eighteenth, the day after, at six fifteen. Um, and now the elementary school, September twenty-eighth is the Wellness Walk for Education. Um, LES Wellness Walk for Education is October fifth.
Hi, I'm sorry to start off here for another year. I'm pleased to see my voice is kind of going, but, of course, can go. So, Junior High, I'm talking about the Wedge Crew. So, I personally, the Link Crew, that would be the senior high version, but Wedge Crew did their orientation and did a day where they had all the new students coming, seventh grade come in, kind of spending day going to the school, doing the orientation things, kind of group on and going around the school, finding little places where to go and do stuff. And also, Junior High started Wildcat Time, which is kind of, it seems like a free course or too much to learn for them to take accountability, actually to learn how to use their time effectively, whether that be through remuneration or just kind of go to basketball, or whatever their options are, and weigh how much time they have left, they go. As I said, Link Crew is in Senior High, do a grade up there. I'm just gonna say this, last year, Link Crew did not go very well. I'll be honest with you. But this year, Link Crew did amazing. My, I have four kids come to the, uh, the tailgate. That is up from zero, so that's a good start. But they were engaged, they actually enjoyed it. I don't really know what the difference was, I think it may be something they kind of heard about beforehand, maybe people were getting more used to it. But it was definitely a large improvement this year with kind of the same lessons, so I think, I think it is a good thing. Um, we didn't see much change this year in the Senior High, and I can say that everyone loves it. We like having a good bit of time, just mess around sometimes, but it's a good amount of time that gets worked on, you know, how to study all, it's always a good little bit of practice of time. And later on, when more and more things open up, it'll give us more opportunities. And also, the whole rotating schedule thing, everyone was extremely scared, it's not too bad to go there. It's pretty good, it's pretty good, it's variety in the venue, you know? Uh, we also opened a credit unit, which is awesome. Right, I mean, we don't think we need credit, but it teaches us responsibility, how to manage our money, it gives us the option of managing our money, put it in a sales account, get a debit card, withdraw any money we need. I mean, that's good steps to go on it, that's been a good thing in our school. So, I guess we're able to. Thank you very much, okay?
Thank you, Adam, thanks for that. Next week, um, um, right away, you'll have a presentation, which will be just, just a very, uh, from the G L B I app on the grants, and then upon a campaign presentation. Um, so, right, this provides a third day for, for, you know. On your agenda for next week will be, uh, uh, a resolution to approve, uh, the verat, the best transition program for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. And where do you want to talk about that?
Sure, this is a program that we have, um, agreed to participate in for the last several years. It is run through Saint Vincent College, stands for Building Excellence Through Skills Training. It's for students ages eighteen through twenty-one who decided to continue their education past their senior year. These are students with more significant educational needs, and it gives students an opportunity to be on Saint Vincent campus where they receive instruction from certified teachers and also students that are in school to become teachers. And then while on campus, the students can participate in intramurals, club sports, uh, any activities they're on campus to fully have the same college experience that any other student will have.
Thank you. Also on your agenda next week will be a resolution to approve the Ed Up by Education, February eighth, and the eighth and ninth school year. Uh, we have one more textbook adoption that will be on your agenda for next week. It's, uh, an antique practical research course, and the reason it wasn't approved were the other textbooks that will be approved is the teacher had to go to training this summer, and she decided for the training, which textbook she liked, so it's, uh, that will be on your agenda for next week.
Excuse me, Mrs. Bates, and it's here for any work that we would like to do.
Yes. One member has a copy, so if you'd like to give it back, please, you'll see. Thank you. How's that happening?
Thank you, Miss May.
Another question we have, I'm concerned about the first day, is not due this afternoon.
We've, uh, we have not had any new appointments, and then on due, uh, we are at seventy-seven, uh, we are at twenty-six, and...
Twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-five.
Twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-five. We've added, um, some substitute teachers, they've offered the first few weeks, um, to help with any issues with, you know.
Fundations, uh, on the agenda for your approval will be the treasure for court, and the bills, and also approval disposal sale or slash sale property, uh, for the business drivers that do. Dan, have that where you're going?
I should, Dan, we have a policy in place that, you know, speaks to what we do with outdated equipment. It basically directs the business manager to come up with a procedure of, you know, how do we get rid of those items. Um, just to quickly summarize, uh, you know, if anything is in good condition, we do our best to sell, sell it. Uh, we post it to the district website, sometimes we place that in the document to the paper, uh, we do electronic, uh, email notifications, uh, to make it aware. If there isn't any interest, then what we try and do is we try and give away, uh, to anybody, faculty or staff in the district or anybody from the community, if we determine completely good use. Um, and if for some reason, we cannot do it away, we look to dispose up, and we look to dispose up in the most efficient manner, um, you know, whether it's recycling, you know, those sorts of things. Um, if we can recoup any scrap metal, uh, we can dispose by it if we try, if we try and do that. Um, early on in this stage, if it's determined that there's some issue with these equipment, we dispose of it, because of liability issues. Uh, the reason this report's coming to tonight is because we have two large vehicles, come on, come on, large, but vehicles are a lot larger than they'd be getting rid of, uh, you know, a, a bow and arrow set. Um, and I wanted to make sure that I brought forward to the board, uh, so it comes through your text, so that you guys can see, um, you know, that we have made an attempt. In this case, with these two vehicles, uh, we've advertised for three months, we've advertised on a pen, and we've called local vendors to see, but the prices we received from the two bids were reasonable, and they did say that they were. So, I would recommend that, um, uh, you know, we include next week the, uh, sale of these two, two, like, them off of the board.
Is that the Grand Piano?
Um, the Grand Piano, that's something different, so that is the, um, uh, that, I, I think you may refer to the, 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 the month of August. Um, we already received that, you guys approved that, the pianos replaced the junior high school. Um, next two items on here, though, just so I can jump to, uh, bid for award of the driver's end vehicle, and bid for award of the Grand Piano, both of those bids will be this Friday. Um, so we will open the bids on Friday afternoon, and they will come forth to the full board at next Tuesday's meeting, make a recommendation to award to the lowest response to the bidder. Uh, I will make sure to have this as certain, um, and Mr. Cook involved in the review of those items as well.
Thanks, Dan. Our next fundraise committee meeting could be Tuesday, October ninth, at five P.M. Facilities operation planning. I, I, you know what, I know what you're doing, Steve, 'cause I think I'm, I think that'd be CSC.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, you're mentioning it right now.
I think we're in the same lines there. So, scraps, the admin bill in this case.
Actually, it's in the library classroom, that's always in the library.
All right, Dan, again, this facilities operation planning, I believe you have an update, uh, for speakers.
Good evening. Wait, I decided to do a little something different this week. Give them to you, show slides, pictures of the actual building itself, inside and out.
It's got the projector, we should be good, that's the product.
Oh, excuse me, I could have brought on my graphs and charts. No worries.
I only want to have to walk that direction.
All right. This is a picture everybody could find on the internet, this is off of your live D camera that looks over the site. You can see how much progress was made on the exterior of the building, all of the, uh, sun changing place, the roofing is complete, except for downstairs. Uh, the, the front area, where, wherever the parent drop-off is, is, has the ceiling complete, has the black fascia that you see on the left that will very soon be receiving the the trade elementary school lathering in the next few days. And it's all being prepared so that we can get gas block down. Probably saw this last week if you were anywhere in the neighborhood. They opened up the fence to complete the sidewalk that leads up to the walking path along Lincoln. And, uh, that's in preparation for us actually doing the parking spaces up front of Lincoln in the very near future. That's a pretty picture. That's your Cherry's Avenue Seers preview of the parent drop-off. Another view of the parent drop-off. Sometime this week, like I'm saying, they're supposed to put the lettering around the black circular area, so it's really gonna stand out. This is a view from Ligonier, looking southeast. This will be the bus drop-off. Come up from the right-hand side of picture, got the kids off under the covered area there, and they continue to the left and out onto Cherry Street and back into the flow. This is your famous lift station. It was completed this week, except for the electrical power, that's coming up very soon. This is the ceiling in the cafeteria. See all the different levels of ceilings, gives it a cloud effect. All the colors from the classrooms, all the accent colors are in this ceiling. This is a nice wall feature, these nano-wall doors, they fold like an accordion, so that they give you maximum entrance into the space and, uh, allow people on the outside to look in and make sure that kids are doing what they're supposed to do, but, whatever that is.
Eating their lunch.
Uh, eating their lunch. It also, I guess it also gives you a place to watch the stage from out there at the sofa. There, you can see what that is.
George, George, is that the terrazzo?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sir. That's the new terrazzo, right?
That's correct. We have it in a complete, it's not complete yet.
Yeah.
It gets one more grinding and one more coating, and then, you know, that's only a few days' process and how to be ready.
Colors are nice.
Oh, yeah. Really, you've got all the same colors that are in the accent colors for the classroom unit. You'll see some more of that in a, in a few minutes when we get to the gallery. There they are. It's beautiful. That's the entry for your, uh, drop-off people. The admin's at that end of the building, so every day when you walk in, you'll be able to look at this. Just recently, the handrails and guardrails started getting welded into place. This is the main stair tower in the middle of the building. This is the CSC, last week, prepping for painting and finishing up the painting. And then this is the ceiling in the CSC this week. We got all the painting done, but, uh, there's, you can see the lighting, let's see if I can find that later. Which one is the way, sorry? I'm sorry. Here's some of the lighting. The shades, you probably won't be able to see, but they're being put in around the, the top of the windows, so you can darken it a little. All the ductwork and everything's painted and in place, and actually, this, this wing's air conditioning and heating unit was turned on today and will remain on for the rest of the life of the building. Here's the ceiling in the media center. You can see he likes using, the architect likes using different levels with different colors, making it quite, you know, appealing to the eye when you look there. Here's the process, terrazzo. Now, I mean, tell you, it's a process. Grind the floor, put down something that'll make the, the terrazzo stick to the concrete, and then you fill in those blanks with epoxy-laden aggregate. Grind it, polish it, grind it, it's a process. And it takes a while, but you can see now these guys are, are working right in front of the elevator. We need this done very soon so we can get our elevator inspection. They won't allow you to inspect the elevator until you have the floor inside and out of the elevator. Here's the classroom. It's got the rubber floor tile on it. It's got carpet right in front of the teaching area. There's a different color, the same colors that you saw in the gallery, and everything's incorporated in. I snapped this right before I came over here this afternoon. I tried to get the guys to clean it up a little bit better, but as you can tell, it's still in pro- progress. These areas right here will be all carpet. It's gonna be real good view. They'll have this floor finished by the end of the week. And that's it. You wanna go back to anything, and see any pictures, or ask any questions, feel free.
George, I would like to add to your question.
Thank you. For your presentation this evening. Uh, have we taken care of the fact that you had stated in your project issues, that contractors for teams that work overtime, they have damage in good weather? Are they working overtime, no?
No.
No? And, can you tell me the reason?
Don't feel, they don't feel like they, uh, need to.
Okay, your professional opinion, and I'm not going to hold you to it. Timeline, when do you feel that the school can be open for our students and teachers? I think we'll get some answers tomorrow, we have a meeting with the contractors, specifically that issue. That's very fair. Thank you. Welcome. And, you know, we talked about the, the, the girls, and it is also, how that progress is that working out a little bit better?
Well, we're still waiting on pieces to come in, so it's working a little better, but, yeah, not, not a hundred percent like we would want.
Okay, welcome, it's gonna give you my personal opinion. My personal opinion is, uh, I don't think that the students or the teachers should be going into the school, and I feel that most of the board, or all the board, feels the same way. I do, until this, this school's completed and safe, uh, for our teachers and students. All right, again, I thank you for your presentation.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, George, good night.
Thanks, welcome. Uh, also on your agenda for your approval next week will be awarding bids for eighteen, twelve, Lincoln Avenue, site for facilities operation planning committee meeting minutes from September sixth are attached. Our next facilities operation planning committee meeting will be Thursday, October fourth, three thirty P.M., if you have any doubts. Student activities recreation, Miss May.
Thank you. First off is a presentation for Steeler, on Steeler Monday, uh, for this year.
Okay, before we, before you go to your manual, because this is a update on the last two years that I was asked to put together, I want to do a little reflection here of what Steeler Night is and how it got to this point, okay? Um, I think the community is very well appreciative of the night, and I think all of us are, and a lot of us helped with this night. But I, I was with Mr. Rooney a couple of weeks ago, and his comment was that he believes we've grown Friday Night Lights, they call it, probably the most prestigious night in all the NFL preseason camp stuff. So, I take a lot of pride in that the people that do it with me, and essentially what you have to understand is how this came to be, I think, first of all, to this magnitude, and the fact that this is a fundraiser, as weird as it sounds, no different than a huge heart machine, it just happens to be a pro football team coming in. So, you run it as a fundraiser, you get a lot of help, you get a lot of people who want to work for, for less than anyone, we wouldn't get a lot of volunteers. Back in two thousand nine, it's kind of weird, it's almost been a decade for me doing this, back in two thousand nine, student council, as we did Steeler Night, student council at that time also did a concession stand for football. Okay, and that was that, and honestly, they did it because nobody wanted to do it, in case of, it's kind of a story. Then, when the new football, they, they would get about ten thousand dollars a year, especially if they had the five home games, and that's about great. But then, when two thousand ten, eleven came, the new football staff and the boosters wanted their concession stands. And, um, and Steve will remember this, and Sue will remember these conversations we had. This is where things got turbulent for a while, because student council always had it, they've had their money, but now football wanted it, it's their games in their mind. So, at that point, we sent out the church school, the athletic committee, and Mrs. Sawyer was there, it was in old admin buildings, how long ago this was? And with student council being in the pit, but we had to, and what we decided was, it was a football stadium. So, basketball got there, concessions, soccer got there, concessions, football would get their concessions. The trade-off was, student council then would help assist with Steeler Night, and we would try to get them a guarantee of five thousand dollars a year for the kids per. So, that began the process, and then football would always go to Steeler Night and stuff, and doing the cooking. So, the understanding would be they would then get three thousand dollars for all the cooking, and student council would get five thousand dollars for all their programs. So, you were already committing eight thousand dollars. And at that time, and we'll get to that in a minute, until twenty fourteen, there was already fourteen thousand dollars committed to the budget, the general operating budget of the, of the school district from the event. So, you're already looking at twenty-some thousand dollars, and you had to bank even to have anything for anyone else, so obviously, not many other programs ever really got much in this Steeler Night. Then, it proceeded on to the point of twenty thirteen and fourteen, when Dr. Mafa was on the athletic committee with us, we actually called a meeting, tried to work some things out. I used to send a letter recap every single year for this dealer, saying, here's what we did, here's what the money went in. They never really complained, but you just got the feeling from them, they weren't real thrilled about the fourteen thousand dollars going into the general operating budget. The money they're mine was to be raised for the kids, you know? And we agreed with that, nobody had argued, the finance committee agreed with that, athletic committee agreed, Dr. Mafa agreed. At that point, we pulled that money out, because number one, we were putting money into the general operating budget that you didn't know was gonna happen to children. There's no guarantee that might happen, so to rely on that money, you're, you're relying on something that may not even be there. So, in the end, we now, from twenty thirteen and fourteen, took that money out, was freed up to money, kind of all the programs now. So, there's where we started to expand and more and more help, and tie in more and more programs. So, with student council then getting their five, bussing was changed, if you remember. A big piece of this was first student use. A big piece of this was first, students used to charge us fifteen hundred dollars to bring the Steelers from St. Vincent over. A.J. Myers of D.M.A. came in and felt they were part of the community, they do all what you see down there for no charge. It's free. And in fact, every time the Steelers came to Rossy Field, it was free. So that freed up a three thousand dollar swing in money. So now we're on the process through twenty fifteen, and starting to generate more and more revenue that we can share with more and more programs, and we started inviting more and more programs to take part in this. So then the band became a part of this. And with football being so busy in twenty fifteen, the Steelers and I had talked, they finally allowed us to raise ticket prices. If you remember, you never were out of charge anybody under twelve years old or over sixty five. Well, if you look at that crowd, it's been a whole bunch of kids, twelve or thirteen and under. So when they knew they were, as expenses were going up for us, they finally gave us the green light to go get a charge. So we only charged two dollars and five. But that made a big difference because about two thousand of those fans were four thousand more dollars for our program. So to continue through time, more and more programs, and then in twenty sixteen, enter ESPN. Now it's taken on a whole nother level of life. And at that point, I want to say we started having fifteen or sixteen programs helping us and getting revenue from doing this night. And it got a little overwhelming because everyone laughs about the orange shirts because we had so many people helping that. And there were some of you here, I know, helped with this night, you're there. It's a massive night. It's not easy to manage. We estimated by last year, we had three hundred volunteers helping. At some point throughout that process, three hundred people helped us Steeler night. So it's not hot, it's community's night. So after ESPN arrived, that of course started to push the gates up, the sales, because more people were coming. And that allowed us to, I want to say, help it, it's in my mind, I want to say sixteen or seventeen teams. Then in twenty seventeen, we reached a climatic point with ESPN where they returned because the ratings were so high, and they actually televised live on T V in the sports center live from Lake Grove High School. First time ever a professional football practice was televised live. So at that point, this night had been pushed to about as far as you're going to get it worldwide. Now, now it's on national, international television, and the Steelers Network, and the ESPN. So then we found out this year, we reached, and that was, I want to say nineteen programs, this year we were actually able to raise the most money ever. And we've continued to climb every year. I don't know how far we reached our high watermark, because this year I don't know how many more fans we could have fit in Memorial Stadium. But the ironic part to me was, I always say, well, the weather gets nice, the hometown people come. When that sun broke out, you get Greensburg, head to a warm, a mouth pleasant, it rains, they stay home. That's your last three thousand people, I say, is the weather that there is. We were able to generate, and you'll see in the report, over thirty thousand dollars this year after the bills were paid. I think we shared it with twenty, it's twenty some programs. And it's been on, and it's the most we've ever made. And the interesting thing is, people will say, well, how do you decide who gets the most money? Honestly, some of it, as we know, is predetermined. You know, football's getting three, student council's getting five, and the band, I'll run all the windows, and they get fifteen hundred for the band. And most of it, honestly, you view the size of the program, another kid's in a program, and you try to give them, say, a thousand dollars, and maybe you have a smaller program, five hundred dollars. And we have twenty some programs showing up to field, like you cross soccer, sell them fifty fifty, working concession stands, carrying drinks up and down. My job at that is actually easy, it's the stress of getting to the night. So that being said, this year was the banner night, and if you open your packet, I want to explain a little bit about the processes of Steeler night, of the actual financial process. Because let's be honest, this is a big moving thing. You're talking ten thousand people. Under the stadium are three district employees each year. This year it happens to be Jody, Rena, and Tammy, as you'll see in the front page of your packet. The money is placed in lockbacks. And it's taken by Mr. Frankford, usually with a police officer, to break through the bank, deposit it in a lockbox. Now, at that point, it sits in a bank of money, it's retrieved by the secretaries and the school police, brought back, school council deposits it. So to be very honest, I don't ever touch the money, except maybe I hands on to somebody. But the key is, the only startup cost involved to the school district is a fifteen thousand dollar startup check so that we can make change for the windows, and change for the concessions, and change for the fifty fifty. And that money then is re deposited straight back into that account. And that's where I think people, you have to understand, it's a fundraiser. There is no startup cost in terms of funding. It's just a matter of how much we're going to make after we pay back the fifteen thousand dollars we borrowed to start the windows up. I get a little meticulous at times, but if you turn to your green tab, this is this year's If you look at the highlight of the number, it says fifty four thousand four hundred eighty one fifty six. That's the money that actually gets deposited in a bank. I think I get it right, I think the tabs should all be the same color. Then you'll see the total expenses were twenty thousand five seventy one sixty six. And if you go to the rank column, you'll see there's thirty three thousand nine hundred nine dollars and ninety cents, the most we've ever had to give you up, so to speak. Then you'll see where the money was allotted, and we actually have nine dollars and ninety cents left. Unless you eat pizzas, they're nine fifty, so I was highly considering, we might be able to get a few pizzas with what's left. So essentially, all the money truly goes to programs. School doesn't take any, nothing is deposited here, and that's this year's totals. Now, student council, you're going to look at and say, why did they get eight thousand? You said five. There was a problem we had two years ago with a fundraiser for the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy here in the school district. I don't want to say it was a flop, because that's not true, but it didn't generate near the money they committed to for doing worldwide hunger efforts. They fell six thousand dollars short. It was made. So what do you do? Student council lent them six, and I promised them through Steeler night, the kids worked them, we would pay them back through Steeler night, so it didn't have to come from anywhere. If you remember, two years ago, when we started the youth football league, we said we were going to use the Steeler money over three or four years to replace the cost that didn't cost the taxpayers anything for the football team. So that's why you'll see youth football on there, and that, the Lake Grove Fire Department used to charge us, back in two thousand twelve, the last time they quote, charged us fifteen hundred dollars to park and run the street parking. Now they just take a donation, and they help us. I think this year we gave them, what, eight hundred dollars? That's half of what we used to give them, some more money to go to the kids. So, and then when you see the scholarship on there, that Trooper Stewart scholarship is what the Pittsburgh Steelers do for the Lake Grove School District, where one student is going to go to St. Vincent, a major criminal justice, received like, I want to say, a ten thousand dollar scholarship. And that money, through the fifty fifty, through us and Parks and Rec all day, and their picnic, and their festival they have, a third of that was picketed to go to the Trooper Michael Stewart for lunch. Now next year, then I created what was called last year, the famous V I P chair. That might have been the best accidental thing I ever did in my thirty years with this trip. Built that I know with those little black chairs we're going to be. We sold out a hundred V I P seats last year before we got to June. The interesting thing is, that brings in ten thousand dollars in day note tickets. Now the weather's such a long factor. Now you invest some of that, because we give them gifts, we give them, we probably actually make about seven thousand and ten, so to speak, after we give them meal, we give them their Steeler gift we buy for them as a V I P for the night. Next year, the Steelers are going to allow us two hundred chairs. And an extra hundred is for the Trooper Michael Stewart scholarship, which then will allow them to release the other money to our kids. And they will use their own road chairs to fund their own scholarship that goes back to, guess what, greater nature. So it's a pretty cool thing. As I said, how big this event's going to get, I would love to see it growing and growing and growing. Then, if you look at the second page of Orange Town, I just want to make sure you understood, there's actually two deposit tapes. And the reason I put that in there was, believe it or not, the last day at camp, the Steelers could not work out at St. Vincent, they had to play Green Bay Thursday night, it was Tuesday. They needed somewhere to practice. So Kevin Holger called me, said, Mark, we've gone to No More Stadium. Well, I'm not sure, what am I going to say? Of course you can. I didn't know it was open to fans. So literally out in No More Tuesday afternoon, I'm flying out of Lake Grove Stadium, and three thousand people proceeded to come in. They put charges, but then we hurried up, opened the concession stands, and we still went in another, whatever, there were two thousand dollars. So we capped the Steelers out, so to speak, for the year. Now, if you turn, that's, and then everything you see there, I'm just trying to explain, I'm trying to be transparent to where it all goes. Because I know people have questions, because if you get a chunk of money, you wonder, where does it go? Now, if you look at the slips, it'll verify every bill, and it'll correlate back to the front page, how much that bill was, and when the check was sent. Now, I don't actually have copies of the actual checks, that would be Dan, you know, this department. But it's pretty open and honest. Now, if you turn to the blue, that is the twenty seventeen recap. What's kind of interesting is I did this to begin the, watch your own numbers flow and see what's happening. And I always try to keep three years running pretty good, even though it's just a fundraiser, because which kids got what, and whose turn is it to get a bigger thing? For example, the baseball won the state title two years ago. We gave baseball, and you'll see it reflected, I think it's in this year, we gave seventeen hundred dollars instead of five or six hundred, but it was paid, Dan paid it directly towards their championship ring, so all the kids could get a championship ring, the team would put it forward. So that money went to help them get that. So each year, like the one year the basketball team was trying to go to Disney, so a bigger piece went to boys' basketball that year for help. And then you make a move of that, so that the next year, somebody else gets the line to share. If you look at twenty seventeen, and the reason I said it, because this is where the youth football program started. If you look at our school community programs, where it says twenty six thousand one hundred, and you turn your page to the yellow tab, and look at the plot, and where it says twenty six thousand one hundred, that's the programs last year that we funded, and every cent went, and there it was. So I essentially read the slips and say, yeah, we figured out which team's getting what. But the money is what it is. It's deposited from that night to the bank, to the payment account. So that night, we show a negative balance, and the reason I wanted to go over this was, it's going to be negative because we had to file the youth football startup stuff. And we said we were doing it out of the Steeler account. Therefore, it's going to go negative until we pay it back over three years, and then it should bring that back to zero. There's even notes on the side, you know, Mark and Dan are aware of this. I try to show you why and what people do. I keep track of that every year, who sells in the stands, because I call them, are you still selling this ten this year? So this is my cheat sheet too. But actually, the yellow paint, you see the deposit slips, and then again, all the invoices and all the payments that's to go out. Now that's, I don't know, and then I even have twenty six, like I said, I keep three years running all the time. Twenty sixteen, even with the Kelly Pickler concert, which turned out to be a flop, so to speak, in my opinion. Well, it wasn't near what they thought it was going to be, and that's just, I was a little angry that year, I had a lot of work for people for three weeks. But the remaining money was only twenty one thousand dollars. So you had Steeler night just two years ago with a concert, and with ten thousand, unless you made issue. Now ten thousand is pretty much the V I P chair that I set along the track. So in the end, again, it shows you where the money goes, even back to your packets, back to twenty sixteen, and what the people did to get it. So if there's any other questions on this Steeler night, I mean, I'd be glad that people come to my office and look at it. If you have information, call here to the dime, well, for nine dollars and ninety cents of it, if you want to buy it. But I did want to pass out one thing, and I think this is very interesting. I know there was a lot of speculation on the internet and places about the subsecretary. Here's the key, what people have to understand, the Steelers give us the gate very graciously. And as we saw this year, we made thirty three thousand dollars. If it cost us eight hundred bucks to bring someone to help answer the phones, I think I'll take that trade off every time. And this person that was brought in works for the school district, she's just off in the summer, she's depending on secretary. So she comes in, and it's not overtime, she doesn't have overtime tags, she just sits there for six hours or whatever, and answers the pellet, and then brings pretty much off the wall. I wouldn't even want to be that person. This year was Sue Vazancio for the last three years, because she's off in the summer, she's the guidance secretary, just to show you where did that person come from. I'm trying to ask, I wasn't here in June, who's married and has surgery that night, and unfortunately, she had a heart attack, that you all missed me, at the last week. So this is the first time I can get here to answer these questions, I've been trying to answer the people. But I thought, the phones will ring in January on, because I didn't realize how many people live in, work in Steeler Mills across the country that have to book their vacation in January. I didn't know you had a pick in January when you wanted to take it, we were off. So I get it now, because it's become so popular, they want to come, they want to make sure, when is it? And I obviously can't help them a lot of saying, because it might not happen, you know, it's a culture of fear. All I ever tell them is, let's just say that every year it's the first Friday in August so far. Take it from there. But this is something interesting, and this isn't about patronizing the other thing. I just want you to understand, this night has become more of a year round thing for me. We get communication from all over the United States all year long now. And this just, they just happened to miss September fourth. So I just want to show you, across the nation, how in tune people really are to stay up on this night, because they want to come, they want to make sure they don't miss it. I just find it interesting, that during September, people from Virginia are still talking to you back and forth about this night and what it means. And the last thing I'm going to close out with, remember when I said I'm a little anal, and I think that's the auditor in me? But you'll see in two thousand seventeen, football owed about a thousand dollars. Because there was so much thought left, it was silly to tell Pepsi to come take everything back, so the Thursday night, you ran all back for football, for the opening football game to be here. So we decided, here was going to be the deal. I was going to count everything left in those concession stands, go to what was paid for by the object, total up, and whatever that was would come off the three thousand, and then they would get what's left. Which was fair, I mean, it was a lot of work, and you're actually counting packs of cans. But just to show you, I found this today, I found it online, to show you the depth I go to, to keep every team even, so nobody gets treated, actually, football came out ninety six hours ahead of you. But I just want you to know that this is the work it was in, to try and account for every, literally, pack of engines. I just happened to find this today.
Mark, can you keep the hammer hands on?
Yeah. But then, the other reason I'm showing is to show you the detail that does go into the accounting process. Like, I can't just give football three thousand dollars on the stock itself. That would be poor. You know, you have to account for what's in there, what was the value of that, and where does it come from? So I think I've answered the presentation of, here's where Steeler night was, here in the last decade is where it's gone to, here's how it's handled. If somebody can tell me a different way they want to handle it, I'm glad to do that. I don't know how much more. I mean, you add it, subtract it, it's there, it's there, I gave it to you, I didn't say, I'm giving you, it all exists. You know, anybody that wants to come in, discuss why this is not top, answer any questions I can. And I can answer them now, if you have any, I just, yes?
And thank you very much for your presentation this evening.
I think this is what people were looking for.
I'd like to know, and this could be very hard to do, and I understand, because I've worked that out before.
As I said, look at you, you have.
The gate receipt money totals, as well as the fifty fifty, I noticed they're not broken up.
The fifty fifties not broken out because it's a chunk of money that gets totaled. And they go up to the announcer and say, here it is, and a person comes and gets it. So it just becomes part of the revenue for that night. Now, we know what the fifty is, because every year the winner gets it, and it's announced, and we like, I know this year was four thousand one hundred, I want to say twenty five dollars. But that's part of revenue for the night, that they keep separated during the night, because you don't want your fifty fifty money anywhere else. Then they announce the amount, and then that, they wrap that money through the machines, and it gets deposited with the revenue. So, I mean, I could list it on here, we know what it was, but it went in with the big deposit. The gate revenue, it's gone into the concession, you're never going to know your gate revenue at Steeler night. First of all, the first five hundred tickets are free, the Steelers, if you go to the Steelers Gatorade camp, you get two, the first two hundred and fifty kids get to go, they get a free ticket, plus their dad or mom get a free ticket. So there's five hundred people with tickets coming in that aren't paying anything, and there's nothing you can do about it. So there, and I'm often taught to do, you sell a numbered ticket, and I don't know how humanly you do that, except to trust the people that are selling the tickets, and you were there when they come, I mean, just, I mean, I don't know exactly how to ever achieve it.
So basically, there's no way of breaking down concessions. So basically, there's no way of breaking down concessions, stand money totals, and whatnot, because I know it's a very active thing. You have people running around, you know, actually drink money to the back. The only recommendation I'd like, I'd like to make, and I think, you know, you put it into a depository, and then, and I, I would like to see, and I, this is just a recommendation to the board, a night deposit slips made, as the people count the money. Now, you know, most businesses do that. And I, I think it actually puts everybody at work. And I think if it's deposited that night, with the totals, if it's wrong, the bank will be able to tell you. But I like to, I like to see that done, I think that protects you, and everybody else that actually worked that.
But if I had that right, might just be going from what I did. You don't count that money, you put that money in the bag, it's locked, you put it in the overnight thing, then when you get it on Monday, that's when you actually unlock it and count it, at that point.
Just making a recommendation.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's, that's.
I understand, but that is my recommendation, and I think, and I thank you very much for your presentation, Steve.
Bottom line is, anything.
The only thing I did see were the deposit slips from 2017.
Well, the, that, well, I have to go retrieve downtown, Dan would have to find those, but you have the deposits written out, statement from 2017. If you look at your.
Yeah, I see the total amount.
Right, that's the total amount that went in.
From the statement of the receipts.
Right, I'd have to go downtown and retrieve the other ones, I had issues, because we just did. I will, I'm just saying, that's where I gotta go get them.
So. You know, just making a recommendation, and I thank you very much for this presentation. And I do believe this was very thorough, and actually thorough for the first time. And I agree that you need it done, and I thank you very much.
Sure.
I have one thing I'd like to bring out. I think it's nice to look at the local businesses that are making money that night as well. As well as all those local businesses that, we have no idea. I have to believe that on this night, Dino's, Sharky's, you know, you name it, they had to be making money that night with all these people here. Knowing the number of people who come in from out of state, the hotels in the area, that will probably.
You're exact, and I can tell you, um. Well, I can tell you, I know a few stats. The county commissioners have shown up now, because this is not just Lake Forest. Yeah, it's in our stadium, but let's be honest, you're not jamming ten thousand people with Lake Forest. Last year, when ESPN was here, because they asked us to help them with their fan base, they had a lot of people coming from New Jersey where their base from, there was not a hotel room left within thirty-two miles of Lake Forest Place. By the time we got to Friday nights. I was actually trying to recommend Donnie to all the people, because they would get on a turnpike and head back to New York, head that way, and they do. So, Steve, you're right, it's not, it's, the pebble drops in, it ripples out pretty, pretty fast and pretty far. While I'm up here, I.
How long did this take you to.
A good while. But I wanted to write, I mean, you know, I want everything, actually, this minor will not last me next year. Because it gives me a flow to where we're going. But it took days to get it, but because I wanted the finances right, I wanted where it went, here's where it went, here's where I, here's where it went, here's this, and, this is the way I want it, as an audit, it took a long time.
Mark, I just wanted to thank you. I had no idea, and I've been around enough to see and see, and I can't imagine how much time it would take. And I have a question, how is your life?
She's fine, lovely, just nice. But, I appreciate all your concerns, and that was a dumb call you had on again.
I just want to tell it, like, make sure you tell us, Steve, how much we appreciate this. I go back years ago, when coming to Crease, it was the equipment manager, and the school, and just the way it seemed. And I was all happy, because we bought some used football shoes for the stadium. They would send us a box of practice shoes, five of them, to some of our students. This has come a long way.
Well, that's, it's now a kind of a natural thing. A lot of people do ask me, well, when they come to your place, do they rent your facility, do they pay to come? Honestly, they rent our facility forty thousand bucks at a time. And if we go over the last twenty years, they're probably good for about seven hundred thousand dollars for the later. So, no, I do not charge them when they need our, they need a hand.
And years ago, a lot of the local school referees come to this, and they say, how do you guys, how do you get that? I don't know if they come to Crease, or I don't know if they come to Mount Pleasant. We're very fortunate, not just because they're a area, but I mean, we've got a lot personally, for this, I want to thank you. And it's like, that we've challenged you, or asked you to complete a trust, but it's completely re-trust. And I'm glad you didn't turn it, I had to go for the time.
I like to go for the time. Mark's out of time, so get your glove, and then, right now. And there was questions, I do have some stuff, I guess, was there questions about youth football? I'm just trying to, while I'm here, answer everything I missed in the last two months.
Your question about youth football is a moment?
It's, uh-uh, wait. Am I being a moment?
Our participants are already.
Actually, we are almost twenty-seventeen to twenty-two juniors, twenty-five seniors, which are age groups of the team. And this year, we have twenty-three juniors and twenty-six.
You're talking to Mark C. J. B., right?
Well, what's happened, one group's called third and fourth grade, one group's called fifth and sixth, they call them juniors and seniors.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Mark, nine, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
No, no, I have that too. This is the youth league.
That's the youth.
Yeah, and I made it on this, everyone has. Those black lines are actually kids, you just can't see them, they're red helmeted kids. That's my son, but the red didn't cover their names, so, those aren't planes.
Listen, Mark, well, Mr. Roberto asked a question about discussion of football, I've heard to the seniors at varsity, over two years, that's J.B. That's why I do ask you that question.
And we do have about thirty-nine little flag kids this year, and have, I want to say fifty last year, little guys, that run around the flags, I'm not sure they know if they're going to have it or not. And they're not, but they're getting graded football. I think a lot of people, to be honest, and I know I talked to Mr. Roberto about this, originally, a lot of people hesitated on this idea, but half of them, no, it's not a bad thing, it actually probably is a good program for the community. So, and the last one, I, there's questions about varsity football?
High school.
High school, I mean, I just made sense, that these are the rosters of the high school for the last three years and junior high. Why didn't, someone, I just, I'm just handing out to everybody. I'm just handing out everything I was asking. And to be fair, the top sheet you would see has nines on, because I had to count the ninth graders, so we moved them up. And it wouldn't have been on the last two years, so even apples, apples, you have that.
The question that had been raised at a previous meeting was, we spend approximately forty-five thousand dollars, I think, for football coaches, and was the participation similar over the last few years? And do we allow reduced coaches if the participation rate goes down? And my comment was, that we would have to see a trend in that, in order to, what I would believe to recommend, in order to reduce coaches. So I think, I'm not sure, I've looked at it, I think, Mark, this is contributing the participation in varsity and J.B. football over the last three years.
And the junior high.
Right, and what is the trend there?
The trend is, well, what's interesting, the trend right now is, the high school is taking literally forty-eight, forty-eight to fifty. And you count grades ten to twelve.
And that's grades ten through twelve?
Right. Now, ninth grade was added this year, that's why there's little black nines, so we took them out, so that it skew the number. What I found interesting was the explosion in the junior high. It went from twenty-seven to twenty-seven to thirty-eight. And I think Merle and I were talking before the meeting, some of that is, you know, we started last year, in youth football, the new design, everyone plays, everyone is it, and we started, I want to say, with ninety-nine kids from K through six. And at the bank, we had ninety-nine kids. So I think what it did, the philosophy we were using, brought them into the program, we won every game, with our two and O levels this year. But they've indoctrinated, where football is fun, I got to play, and this is me, and now they stay with it. So I think Merle's right, I think we saw that first little bubble, the surge of numbers, that's gonna just have to grow itself up through. Those youth coaches do a good job, we now have our board of directors, so I can finally stop arguing with football by myself. But, the key to board director, we have a program, someone asked around. Yeah, I'm not here forever, no one's here forever, you have to have a board to run things. And when Bob Holbert stepped up, when he saw this league was forming, he wanted to help. You couldn't get a better guy than Eric Jeff, than that gentleman. He, upon his Mount Pleasant, so they, he's the commissioner of the entire league. And he sits and talks to the coaches, explains football rationale, explains his experience, he's a certified USA trainer. All our coaches have to go through the USA football safety training, proper acting techniques, get certified in that. I mean, so he's an invaluable resource, he comes, he'll sit in a press box, he doesn't say a word, he just watches, sends out an email to the teams, actually, here's what I saw, here's what you might want to consider. It's like the wise old Al, you know, sitting up there helping out. But who better than L. Trovere to have as a football commissioner than a Holbert? And he does it for nothing, he just does it because he wants to help out with youth, youth sports. Okay, so, I can't miss three months anymore.
So the enrollment in youth football over the last two years is consistent, and the enrollment in the varsity and J.B. programs are consistent over the last three years, there's no dips, and the junior high enrollment has actually increased this year.
Yeah, something caused junior high to jump, and I would have to go deeper and see, count the seventh graders versus out of sixth, to see, was it a player, how they were. But we just noticed that that was a twenty percent jump, thirty percent jump, so, which is good. Okay, so, did I miss any of the others in the last three months? Does anyone else have any questions? And really, if you want anything to call, there's stuff, I mean, I have, I'll try. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark, good job.
Thank you. And, for next week, we'll be allowing you to approve the dental coordinators and the cross, um, hospital. There is a list of all of the senior nights coming up, for girls tennis, cross-country, for volleyball, boys soccer, field hockey, football, band and cheer, and, um, girls soccer, so, as you have plenty of your time, which I also appreciate.
Meeting relations, Dr. George.
All right, the Mark rec, the Thursday, September twenty-fourth, four thirty, by the group, in this group. Yeah, I have a question, what's happening with the, are they keeping that road open when the buses come through the mountain in the morning, and it's closing in the afternoon, and the weather? What's happening? What's that? They keep it open when the buses are here at the entrance, or do they close down?
Close, I grew up from thirty to, to, you know, it's grade school, working on the speedway gas station. I tried to turn right, but I had a, I just wanted to screw up the bus.
Maybe go with George. Intermediate, Mr. May.
There's a summary of the W.A.U.R.B. events from August through late November, nineteen eighty-eight. And our next committee meeting is Tuesday, September twenty-second, December twenty-first, and February twenty-first.
D.W.C.T.C. going to operate, creating music.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, with your stuff.
Oh, yeah, I think, oh, very, very good. That's all I got, sir.
Word policy, Mr. May.
Thank you. Um, as I talked to you before, we always allow P.S.V.A. officer elections, but, and we actually took a look at it. There's only one person present, president, one person present for vice president. We don't have a good on any of that other stuff, we do have a good on the P.S.V.A. insurance trust, custody positions, and verbal pre-see ceremony, pretty people, right? So it's pretty much, we're going to operate and do, but, um, we'll be up the agenda next, we will go through that, there is one, so, and she will, and she will, so, um, that was pretty easy one. Now, we moved to board policy, we see there's quite a few policies, um, to be updated. And we're going to go on first pre next week, so, if you put, we'll use these policies, and see if you have any questions or comments, or concerns about any of, just these others now. Now it's a lot of, and also, it's, it's, it is important, so please go over that, and we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
I just have one question, why are we deleting these policies about growing out of a president?
Mark, may I answer that? Because the gesture that's on is, is to contact out, that is under the contract of the bus contract.
They're still testing.
Yes, it's a positive eighteen.
Technology, Mr. Paul.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Also, all these board policy changes are based on recommendations from the U.S. court.
Correct.
Technology, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm very important, Oliver, our next meeting, and the students, and the officers, please, here at the C.S.C. side.
Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. Spire.
Uh, next week, we've asked for the move on some resolutions regarding the hiring of additional substitutes for the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year, as well as appointing classified substitute secretaries, as well as personal care assistants, as well as a math teaching assistant. Um, we are asking the board to approve some supplementals for a head cheerleading coach, as well as an assistant cheerleading coach next week. There are four resignations on this next week's agenda. I would simply note that there are two employees who have submitted their resignations for retirement as of September thirty-first. From our maintenance department, they are David Malloy and Kevin Yandrick. Um, both of them have been employed with the district well over thirty-five years. We appreciate their service, and we certainly wish them well in retirement. Under other business, our football junior high band tonight is the Friday, September twenty-first, in Memorial Stadium. Um, as well as our meetings are noted in September, we have a regular meeting next week here at seven-thirty, and then our meetings in October, the ninth and the sixteen. I would like to just make two special notes. Um, you may recognize that Jack Doherty, Doherty is not here with us this evening, and he has notified us that he is moving out of the area, and will no longer be televising any meetings in the area because he is moving. Um, we recognize the need to continue to videotape our meetings and to, um, place them in some area for our community members to view our board meetings. And so therefore, Mrs. Pinus is here, Dr. Pinus is here this night, tonight, doing it, and hoping that we can partner with the, um, video class at the senior high school, but we will have it videotaped. Um, it will probably, we'll put a link where Mr. Doherty used to play it on the TROV TV, so that people recognize that it will be on our website for people to view. Um, and I'm not sure, and the other meetings that he videotaped outside the district and where they're going, we recognize the need to have ours videotaping available. But my most important announcement is to thank him for his years of service. Um, he has been part of the TROV TV for many, many years, um, and really, did it out of service, um, informing the community of what was going on, so, we thank him for his service. And I will send a letter to him thanking him for his service as well. In addition, we'd just like to note the retirement of Chief Jim Boomer. Um, Chief Boomer was recognized last night at city council, and Mr. Franco was able to attend. We thank him personally from the school district for his work with us in assigning, and developing, actually, the school resource program, officer program here at the school district. He really was instrumental in that, and we do appreciate it, and we do wish him well in retirement as well. And from what I read, he will be here locally. And from what I read, he will be here locally, um, teaching, um, the department, I believe, at St. Vincent College. So we would just like to recognize that retirement as well. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you, Mrs. Swager, for being here.